Had some out of town guests come in unexpectedly, so he will not be joining. I see Ken Upton's here. How you doing, Ken? Welcome to our Tuesday night meeting.
Good. How you guys doing?
Good. Oh, cool. Jack just arrived. So I will lead off the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So welcome everyone to the Plain Township Board of Trustees regular meeting for June 1st, 2021. Roll call, please. Bud, you're on mute if you think you're talking. You are still muted. Ben, can you unmute him? Okay, either that or I'm suddenly on mute.
I hear you, Dave.
Oh, okay.
I hear you.
Ben, can you hear me? You're on mute, too.
I can hear you. I sent him a request to Bud, but I can't unmute him.
Uh, let's see. He... Oh, Bud's mic isn't working. Okay, Ben, you want to do roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Olstead?
I am here.
Mr. Ripski?
Here.
And Mr. Ferguson is not here this evening.
He will not be attending. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? I will start off with one that I will ask for a... An executive session prior to the administrator report as we have an appointment this evening. So it is for purposes of appointment. And so we'll just do it then, and that'll get it out of the way before... We won't, unless you have another one, Tom, that you'd like, that you want to do at the end as well?
Um, I don't believe so. We'll have one maybe our next meeting with trustee Ferguson can attend.
Yep. Sounds good. So we will just end up going into executive session real quick before the administration done. Uh, let's see. Jack, do you have any additions or corrections?
No, sir.
Okay. Bud, did you dial in on your phone? I see you in a... Oh, here you go. You're lit up now.
Yeah, I'm back. Sorry, I'm signing in on a different computer because the mic wasn't working on that. But Ben did a fine job, so I cleared your attendance report. I feel like I wasn't missed at all anyways.
You were.
Corrections, but I do apologize. Sorry, guys.
No, I... Sometimes my headset just quits working, so I thought, wait a second. Am I the one that wasn't on?
Sorry.
Uh, let's see. So we got there, we got that. Ben, anything from you?
Uh, just to note that we plan to discuss the pool season and our hours and operations.
Yeah, definitely. Um, okay, then. So, oh, you know what? Um, let's see. Ken, we'll bump you up on the agenda so that you can take off if you need to. Uh, so we've got approval of meeting minutes for the May 5th meeting. Tom, you were at that meeting. Dave was not. And so I read the minutes. I didn't have anything to correct on that. Did you have anything?
I did not. I'll move. We approved the minutes of May 5th, 2021.
I will second that all in favor. Tom?
Yes.
I vote yes, and those minutes are approved. Tom, you were not there for the May 7th meeting. That was the one where we did the...
Right.
The appointment of consulting engineers, so we're going to skip May 5th. We'll go to May 19th, where again, Tom, you were there, Dave was not. So I will... I don't have any additions or corrections. Do you?
I do not.
Then I will move that we accept the May 19th minutes as presented now.
I will second.
All in favor, Tom?
Yes.
I will vote yes, and those minutes are approved. Uh, let's see. We're down to pending warrants. Could you roll those up, please, Ben, because I did have a couple of questions.
I did, too. One question I had with fellow windows, just for edification. What... Where were we replacing windows or what was going on there?
That was a window on the south side of the bay that doesn't get a great amount of sun on that side. And that window rotted and needed to be replaced. We're assessing some other windows in the building at this point. Uh, but that was the first one that demanded immediate attention.
Thanks, chief. That's all I have.
Great. And then there was... Can you go to the... Is there a page before this one on the check register, Ben? There was one for... Or maybe it was in the credit card for somebody's... Yeah, the next page of... Yeah, so Admiral Flagpoles for $257?
Yes, that was a purchase for a flag. Uh, we've always in the past, when we've done any kind of a special event where a flag has been connected or raised from the ladder, we always borrowed one from... And so we purchased our own this time.
Not a problem. BNC Communications, I did we... I know we've been talking about upgrading some radios. Is that what that one was?
No, that's the annual contract for maintenance.
Got it. Thank you. And then... I think it's the next page. It was like... It sounded like some car-related thing, and that's what I was trying to figure out. It's like, what then? Um, here, let me... Let's see. Hopefully, I can flip over to my computer without... I think I just have to flip another window here. Give me one second. All right, here we go. Okay, let me take a look here. It was just something weird. Uh, not that one. The HNB credit card? Knowledgey? Oh, there it is. Yeah, it's... It was on yours. Jack was obsessed garage in Florida for $1,533?
I'm trying to recall on that one. What was the name of it again?
Obsessed Garage? Uh, let me see. Maybe there's a... Oh, wait. I'm just looking to see if there was a receipt, and I just missed it. See, there's... Wow. Um... Yeah, it's probably in here. I'm sorry. I just, I didn't go down far enough to... Tell you what, I will... I, rather than holding everybody up, I will just take a look at... For this, and when I... Oh, here it is. Pressure washer discovered donation.
Yeah, that was... That was the... I didn't recognize the vendor name. That is the pressure washer for the apparatus that was covered by the Discover Card grant or the Discover Card donation that we got.
How did we choose this vendor? Uh... Did they just drop look on the internet and find what they needed, lowest price?
No, actually, Jason Lieutenant Moore was the one that discovered that vendor and had been working with them for some other products that are a pressure washer that he uses with his business and the care of his equipment.
Okay. Um, yeah, and I know that you review this stuff, so it's just when we get kind of strange... Strange vendors to make sure that... And this is absolutely no reflection on Jason, but just make sure they're vetted. And we know why we're dealing with some of these people that are outside of who we normally would. But given the internet, you know, there's oftentimes...
Yeah.
Good deals out there to be had outside of our area.
We... Actually, there was a number of vendors that were involved in being able to complete that whole setup that was covered by Discover Card to do exactly that.
That's fine. Ben, could you please roll up to the total again on the... There we go. Thank you very much. Tom, any other questions from you?
No, I'm fine. Thanks.
Okay, great. Then I would move to pay the pending warrants in the amount of $293,929.32.
I will second.
All in favor, Tom?
Yes.
I vote yes, and the pending warrants are approved. Okay, so next on the agenda, Ben, you are just... You are like Mr. Flipping Screens and keeping everything rolling tonight. Had too much practice at this. Sub liaison, Mr. Durick is not here. He's at his own meeting tonight, but Officer Ken Upton is here. Ken, would you like to give us just a brief recap of anything that is important that we should be focusing on?
Oh, yes. Thank you. So, I mean, I did send out an email today about referring to the stats for the month of May. They were up a little bit. I don't think it's anything... Nothing stands out as outrageous too much. There were a few things that I... Additions that I put on there to kind of explain a few of the reports that we did have been taking that that may have been a little concerning. One of the things I put on there was in reference to a speed concern seemingly that I've been seeming to get every... Every year in the summertime concerning people owner in the park there most of the weekends. One of the residents was concerned about the amount of traffic going through there and also sometimes the speed on the weekends, mostly for the tournaments that they have at the park there on Sundays. I did speak with the Parks Department, and they acted like it was going to be coming to an end. But maybe I misunderstood what they were saying. I don't know if that's necessarily the case or if they go all summer or not. But that's something that I can try to keep an eye on, and I'll be looking at the stats for that and passing it on to the township. I'm trying to go from there in regards to how to deal with the speed possibly.
Is that Googleheimer Sports of the Park?
So, uh, the homeowner lives south of Walnut. So...
Is it a... Wouldn't that be New Albany PD then?
So there's maybe a quarter of a mile south of Walnut that's still on the township.
Okay, great. Yeah, I know there's some... Yeah, some gaps in there. I didn't know if the city had taken everything at that point. Uh, so, yeah, I know you talk to the PD people all the time, too, so...
Not yet. It goes from 35 to 40 and then to 45. So I talked to Ben earlier, and I think there's a development possibly going in there with New Albany. So some stuff might change here in the near future.
Yeah, cool. And what was the situation on Morse Road? It... Ben had attached a note that said it wasn't... Or it may have been a little bit... There was some nuance to it. The firearm discharge?
Yeah, so right there, Babett Morris area. One night around a little bit after 10 o'clock, somebody fired some shots. It didn't... Nothing was hit that we could tell. We didn't find any holes in any cars, houses, or anything. But the detective bureau is following up with it based on the statements. They kind of think that it was maybe a feud between the homeowners and someone that's... So it's... It may be someone... Not a random incident, but, you know... Someone that somebody knows.
Great, thank you. Tom, any questions from you?
No, thanks, Ken. Appreciate the information. And as you hear more about what happened on Morse Road there, we'd like... I'd like to understand better what went on.
Sure. If there's any updates, I'll make sure to get those from the detective bureau.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. You're welcome, as always, to stay for as long as you'd like. Or bug out if you'd like to do something else. I always appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Okay, so departments, before we go to the administrator, I'm going to go into executive session pursuant to our revised code. Oh, what's our citation? God, I can't think of it tonight. Would you roll up there a little bit for me, please, Ben? It's a 121.22G1 for purposes of employment. So we'll do that. Go over and use the other Zoom call. Everybody's welcome to sit on here, and we'll be back in a minute. Bud, you are welcome to join us, and Ben. And we will talk to everybody in just a minute.
You still on there, Jack?
Down here.
Are you feeling okay?
Yeah, I'm doing fine.
Okay, good. Just wondered. You finished your antibiotic?
Oh, no. I got 11 more days.
Okay. All right. Well, good luck.
Four doses a day for 14 days.
Wow.
Yeah.
All right. I'll mute myself. I just was curious.
Small group tonight. It's more like a morning meeting than an evening meeting.
Yep. Has Kim seen the eagle anymore?
That was a pretty impressive picture, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. Has she seen it anymore?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Yep. We put some bait out yesterday for the eagles here, but I haven't seen them yet.
I'm guessing it was flying over those fields and saw something in the field, and that's what attracted it.
Yep, they have some pretty good vision. How they coming with the fire alarm system?
They coming with what?
The fire alarm system.
Uh, they're still waiting on the panel. I mean, they've got... They're installing devices and everything like that, and they're moving along. Uh, but I talked to him today, was going to try to get an update and just to see how much longer he thought it might be. But he said they haven't got a confirmation on the delivery of the fire alarm panel itself.
Okay.
So hopefully, it won't be too much longer.
Wouldn't think so, but delivery and manufacturing is still all screwed up from the COVID.
Yeah, and I thought that when we originally talked to them, they said that they were going to not start until they had all the devices. So, um... We naturally assume that they had the panel as part of all the devices. But they've got, you know, everything that they need to add in terms of the new devices, but apparently are waiting on the panel. Hey, chief.
Yeah.
Hey, Brian Cantrell is going to contact you. Brian's going to take over the planning of a dinner for you. Chief Eccleberry is going to be pretty busy through the summer. And, you know, with graduation and baseball and the traveling that they're going to do. So Cantrell is going to try to get ahold of you and look at some weekends or evenings and see what we can do. We're going to go... He's going to talk to the Lynx because he's been working with the Lynx for the foundation, for the golf outing and that, and try to finally get something set up to be able to recognize your retirement.
Well, that's very nice. I appreciate it.
Okay, we are coming back.
Hello?
Hey, Tom. Yeah, you can't let me run these meetings. I didn't even hold the vote for going into executive session, but we'll do that, and then we'll vote to come right back out of it again.
That'd be fine. Yeah, I missed that, too.
Oh, I moved, but then I didn't call the... Call the vote, so...
Yeah. Did I second?
Uh, I don't think so. I think I just said, okay, I'll see you there.
Yeah, I think that's not... That's what came down.
So just so we do this right, I had moved that we go into executive session. Tom, would you like to... And that was like 7:20. Tom, would you like to approve that motion?
Yes, I... I'll second approve the motion.
Second the motion, then I will call it. Bud, call the roll, please. I don't know if you're...
I could do. I could do this now.
There you go.
There you go.
Mr. Ferguson is not here, so I will go with Mr. Ripski.
Yeah, yes, I agree.
And Mr. Olstead.
I will vote yes, and we went into executive session, and now it's 7:27, and I will move that we come out of executive session.
My one job, my one job on meetings.
I second it. Bud, you want to call the roll on that one, please?
Yes, now I can do that. Mr. Olstead?
Yes.
Mr. Ripski?
Yes.
Okay.
It is now 7:27, and we're out of executive session.
Okay. Ben, would you please flip back over to our agenda? We've got the... Thank you. The administrator's report. Let's see. What... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
We're going to talk about the pool a little bit.
Yes, that's how you would ask Ben how he wants to... How he wants to approach this.
So we can dive into the pool. As you may... As you may remember, Saturday was unseasonably cool weather. We were scheduled to open on Saturday, the 29th. However, like all but one other local pool, we closed for the day. We did open on Sunday and had some visits. Weather on Monday was much nicer. Uh, and that, if you recall, the governor had announced that come June 2nd, public health orders that would affect pools would be lifted. And many of our neighboring pools have updated their operating procedures in light of that and lifted their capacity limits and pre-registration requirements. So we wanted to talk about how we would proceed now.
I know you had sent out some suggestions there a couple of weeks ago. I mean, the system or the system, the situation has been, you know, even more... More fluid, I guess, than maybe any of us expected, you know, with people just saying, okay, we're just going to take off limits and go back to the way we were.
Yeah, a little bit more rapid than I had anticipated. There's one outlier, Worthington Pools. They're opening a week later than others and only to members initially, and then they are sticking with a 75% capacity limit. Uh, from what I've seen, all the other area pools have rolled everything back, and they're just operating as typical like they did in 2019. We do have some things in place that will continue to provide some buffer. We have a separate exit, so patrons leaving the facility don't have to walk past those entering. Just giving them some social distance to do that. Limit the amount of furniture that's on the pool deck, just basically forcing some social distancing by putting more space between seating areas. We've invited our... by putting more space between seating areas. We've invited our visitors to bring their own seating for the lawn and some have taken advantage of that, but I, I don't have a specific recommendation at this point. You know, I think our pool management company, CPM, is comfortable with returning to normal operations. They're comfortable with doing in-person transactions for daily visits and not requiring advanced registration.
Yeah, I think the, you know, one of the biggest drivers for me is that anybody, any adult and down to what age, 15, 16 now, can get vaccinated in Ohio, and so it's people's choice whether or not they choose to. My only thought was to, you know, put on the pool website and maybe put up a sign that, you know, just a, like an eight and a half by 11, you know, we're, we're open based on the current guidelines, you know, we recommend that that you or that people who are in attendance, you know, recognize the, the opportunities to, to guard against contracting COVID and that's your choice. Not those exact words.
I, I would agree. I think, you know, we follow CDC and State of Ohio Health Guidelines. I think we're being safe and so I would agree with you in that we can maybe entertain, you know, a normal pool season. I like the idea of bringing your own chair and maybe, you know, encouraging some distancing, but as far as hours in operation, I would endorse the idea of trying to get back to normal.
Yeah, and I support that, Tom. And if there's, of course, you know, any changes that, that come up that we need to, you know, deal with, that we can deal with them at that point, but yeah, I'm, I am comfortable with, as are everybody except Worthington and the county of returning to the way that we're doing things in 2019 and encouraging people to take appropriate measures to protect themselves as they see fit.
Hey, Ben, memberships, what have you been seeing there as far as signing up for memberships?
So membership sales did pick up throughout May. We're about half of our typical sales. We'd have to get a number from this goal for, you know, our current to date income, but we were about $160,000 in revenues so far. Of course, actually, 50, that's a transfer, so membership sales, we're looking at about $90,000, which is pretty good. Typically, we'll have about $150,000 average of membership sales. I think once we open up to more typical operations, we will have more members join as they become comfortable. Part of this is just the, the social experience of being distant for so long and feeling comfortable coming back together.
Right, yeah, yeah, and I, and I think that you know, here if we move towards normal operations, that we, you know, try to get the word out to the community that that is the way we're gonna operate and that, that might help with the sales.
Yeah, but right now we're at about 75% of our annual membership sales. What we have seen is that there are more family of four membership sales this year. Couple of reasons for that. We did not offer the pool patron member guest passes along with memberships this year. It's like people had often purchased those for one family member and so we are actually recouping a large share of our membership sales, up to 75% of actual sales for the year.
Which is, yeah, and I'm, I'm, wouldn't advocate at this point discounting any, any membership sales, you know, if we, if we think maybe we could sell a half-season membership in July or something for people who wanted to do that, you know, maybe that, that might be something to consider later, but I'm not looking at discounting anything or adding back in any passes or anything like that.
So on that note, one thing purchased, we did not open yet this season are the passbooks for, you know, a dozen visits. Those have been big sellers in the past, but due to the uncertainty, we wanted to make it a priority for our members and provide them, you know, the opportunity to register in advance. But to that point, it, I'm sure there's a market for the, the pass sales if we wanted to open those up.
What kind of discount is there on those passbooks?
You know, from a, and a doll, daily visit of $10. Makes it $8.
What, oh, so. So we sell the pass, but what'd you say it was, a dozen visits?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, if you bring your kids, then it's, it's not as much of a discount.
Right. I don't know, Tom, I don't have any problem selling those. I mean, it's not much of a, I mean, there's a small discount on it, but not a huge one.
Oh, I would agree in that if you know, we can increase our revenue to cover our costs for the season, I, I think it's a good idea. I, I would say yes, I'd offer those passports.
Okay. We can make that update as well. And I think once we are, you know, open for daily visits and people can just come and go without having to register in advance, we'll, we'll see more of that, especially as the weather warms.
And what's update on the leak situation with the pool?
Well, we've not, Bob has not discovered any other possible sources of a leak, so it's leading more and more towards something hidden underground. We've called around to other plumbing outfits and tried to find someone who would have that sonar equipment. We are continually referred to American Leak Detection. We haven't found anyone else who has that technology. So we're continuing to explore that, you know, if there's anyone in the state of Ohio who could serve us there.
Do we think there's a, a leak in the piping underground?
No, that's possible. Our water use has, has ebbed and flowed over time and we, we had a period back in 17 and 18 where we had substantial water loss. In 2019, it dissipated. We did not lose much water. And, you know, we're not sure if the pool sitting empty for, for 20 months without any water has contributed to some factor. We're, we're monitoring our water usage right now. That's really our only opportunity at this time.
How much, is there a sense for how much we're losing that would make it seem abnormal?
Yeah, I mean visually, we're, we're losing, especially with cooler weather, more than the evaporation rate. And then just looking at the water meter, you know, it, it's, we would typically have to refill the pool on a periodic basis just due to evaporation and, and usage. But we're having to do that much more substantially at this time.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to highlight?
You know, as far as the report goes, we have wrapped up our HRA reimbursements for the 2020 plan year. We came in just under $25,000 over 2019 reimbursements, so we were on target for our projections. COVID vaccine currently available ages 12 and up. Statewide, we are below 100 on the positivity rate and things are trending in a positive direction. I did see that the Ohio Senate introduced their revised budget bill. They did retain language regarding virtual meetings. There are actually several instances where virtual meetings are referenced. I may have misquoted a portion of that. Currently, the specific reference to 121.22 regarding public meetings holds the current format of allowing virtual meetings, you know, so long as the public is able to interact. It does not have the enhanced requirements that are part of a, another specific portion of the bill. It does go through December 31st. And so if that language were retained and adopted, it would allow public bodies to continue meeting as they are.
Okay. And Tom, I'll, I'll let you know that I'm, I don't think I'm gonna be back up before the 15th or the 16th, which is our next regularly scheduled meeting, so depending on Dave's attendance, I, I would suggest that at the next meeting that we look to July and, and see if we would like to go back to in-person meetings in July.
That's fine, Dave. I think that as a group, we need to kinda see what our schedules are and, and adjust accordingly, you know. If we can migrate towards, you know, in-person meetings intermittently, I think it'd be beneficial, but we obviously need to work within the constraints that exist according to code, so we'll look at it and figure out what's best.
So just in, in twice in recent history, this General Assembly has failed to adopt an operating budget by the June 30 deadline. So we may not get an answer by July 1, in which case the virtual meeting authority would go away. So we'll update as.
Yeah, we'll just see what everybody's schedule allows and we'll go from there.
Yeah, right now, our first meeting in July would be the 6th and at least at this point, I plan on being back by then. Good Lord willing and the drywall finisher finishes up timely. So I, I would anticipate being back by then, so we'll, we will play it by ear, but we can talk about it next meeting.
Yep.
One other item, the fiscal office did have a request for a special meeting, but I, I think we've been able to get all of our credit card information in for this meeting, but do we need another special meeting at this time?
I checked with Courtney earlier today, Ben, and she said that they were able to get all of the credit card stuff done. So we should be go, good to go unless Michael, I see Michael on here. Michael, unless you know otherwise, I don't think we need a, a special meeting now, do we?
Not to my knowledge. I think the special meeting was just about the credit cards, so.
Great, thank you so much.
Thanks, Michael. Yeah, we're good to go.
Credit card statements with the signature lines under the fiscal office and we'll circulate those for signature.
Okay. All righty. Well, we have an appointment to the, the New Albany Plain Local, no, Albany Plain Local, the Albany Parks District, which comprises the, basically an overlay of the Plain Local School District, and this is for the, the townships. Appointee, we had four people who had expressed an interest in a role. We had Abby Sonnenberg-Brooks, Abe Jacob, Amy Schottenstein and Jason Milburn, all of whom seemed to be very well-qualified candidates, you know, reviewed their, their resumes and inquired and, you know, and everybody, you know, we certainly thank everybody for, for applying and hope that where we have other roles in the township that would be able to be filled by one of these folks that, that they might be a candidate for, for another role as well. At this point, I would propose that we nominate or designate rather, Amy Sonnenberg, Sonnenberg-Brooks as our JPD representative. Tom, are you okay with that?
Yes, yes, I endorse that and it was, as you said, a strong candidate list and appreciate everybody's offer and willingness to lend assistance to the township, the community and thank them.
Definitely. So we've got Resolution 210601A1, a resolution to appoint a member to the Albany Plain Local Joint Parks District Board of Trustees. Be resolved, Plain Township Board of Trustees hereby appoints, if I called her ABH, I, or Amy, I meant Abby, Sonnenberg-Brooks, a resident of Plain Township to serve as trustee of the Albany Plain Local Joint Parks District Board of Trustees for an unexpired three-year term ending December 31st, 2023. I so.
I will second.
All in favor, Tom?
Yes.
I will vote yes and that appointment is approved and again, thank you to all the candidates who, who has to be considered and we may have another one here in the near future, so it's good to have those, those names of people who are interested. Next on the agenda, we've got Resolution 210601A2, a resolution to authorize payment to Close Pool Management, Inc. for 2021 pool management fees, and this is for the next installment, which is $43,995. Ben, anything that we need to consider with this?
Just a correction here, this is for the June pool payments, sorry for that typo. I mean, it's for the July pool payment.
Oh, okay. So we will note that this is for July. Tom, any questions?
No, I'll, go ahead, Dave.
No, go ahead, you can, you can move.
I'll move, we approve.
I will second that. All in favor, Tom?
Yes.
I vote yes, so Resolution 210601A2 is approved. Okay, next up, we've got the zoning report. Would you like to tell us about this one, Ben? Did, did read your report. I had one question, but let you run through it and let's see if you answer it.
Sure, so we have some additional variance work for our Board of Zoning Appeals. A new variance to allow an additional accessory structure on the property. This is for a ground-mounted solar array that would be an accessory structure on this property. It's a ten acre property. This solar array would be behind the home and not visible from the road. The second item will be a modification of an existing variance for the Estates at Albany Acres development on Wallon Street. Due to some feedback from the Franklin County Engineers Office, the developer needed to redesign the road network for this site and the one lot that does not meet our zoning minimums shifted, and so we're sending it back to the VZD for approval. The essential elements to match our land use plan requirements will remain the same and screening will be required along the access road.
Great, and I noted that there was the, the trail connection that was included in there if the Metro Parks were desired to, to have that connection be made, so that's cool.
Metro Parks is agreeable to that. There's been some discussion so far with the developer. The developer would provide the connection to the trail and Metro Parks is agreeable to creating that access.
Oh, great. The variance application, is this just for, it, it says requesting a variance to reduce the required lot size. Where, is this variance, does this variance just apply to the one lot?
It, it does.
Okay.
And so the, due to the development redesign, the lot number changes.
Yeah, that was.
Yes, Chief.
Hey, Ben. We, we looked at, at the site plan and one of the things that we tried to determine from the site plan was the width of the streets. Do you know what the width of the streets are?
They will have to meet the Franklin County Engineers off standards for dedicated public roads. I can get back to you on what that standard is. There are going to be open swales, they, they won't be curved.
Well, yeah, we tried to, we tried to measure it out and it looked like it was about 21 feet, just, you know, using the scale that they. We tried to, we tried to measure it out and it looked like it was about twenty-one feet, just, you know, using the scale that they provided. And so we had a concern that we may need to require parking only on one side or some accommodation because those are large lots. We expect larger homes there. And the setbacks look like they're not too bad. So the, the aerial, the ladder requires eighteen feet to set it up on the roadway. And so that was one of the things that, that we wanted to try to figure out.
Hey, Chief, did they, or Ben, you know, the right of way width is a fifty or sixty feet?
It's forty feet of dedicated right of way for the road.
Now, that'll be, that'll be your pavement within, Chief, is probably about right, about twenty feet, which is, it is below what you typically see in a subdivision with, you know, a roll curve and gutter, you're probably, your pavement width is usually like twenty-five feet. So.
Right. That's what we were figuring. Twenty-four, twenty-five feet is what we would have, you know.
That would be. Right. That's right.
I will certainly follow up and find out and relay that information to.
Yeah, if they need a variance, it would be good to get them all. And I'm not asking that, that we provide a variance that would reduce the road width. I'm thinking if they need to increase the roadway width that might push something slightly less that they get it all in one shot rather than then end up with, with multiple variance requests. Any other zoning questions? We don't have Bobby United, but we do have a written report. I had no questions on, the only question I had was talked about earlier with, with the pool and the water issues. I don't have anything else.
I did not either.
That although the board has already approved some pavement maintenance for township roads. Tippet Road is a chip seal road and was outside of Franklin County's pavement contract for the year, but the engineers office had provided a quote to perform the services by the force account. Twelve thousand dollars is the estimate for that.
Yeah, and I mean, the road funds are some of the, the ones that, that we certainly have available money to, to use on projects like this. Tom, did you have any other questions? I, I was, that was going to be my question on, on Tippet. Anything else that you have?
Now I review the report and I had no questions.
Great. You want to go ahead and take M one?
A resolution number two one oh six oh one M one, a resolution approved township road maintenance and repairs through the Frank County Engineers Office in a mountain, not to exceed eleven thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars for Tippet Road, maintenance repair of Tippet Road. I so.
I will second that. All in favor, Tom? Yes, I will vote yes, and that resolution is approved. Okay, anything before we move to fire, Ben?
I don't have anything else at this time.
So I'll move to the fire department report. Chief Rupp. You're on mute, Jack.
Yep. Good evening, everyone. As you can see with the fire department report, we had sixty M S runs, forty-one fire runs. So our runs are, haven't totally recovered yet. They're still down. And I included in the report this time, you can see that activities are, special events are picking back up in the community. And so this is a list currently of the special events that, that we have and are planning for special duty for.
Yeah, I appreciated that. I, I mean, I knew like Pelotonia is going off the, or is they're writing the, the first week of August. And because of some of the changes, I saw the routes there a couple of weeks ago, and I think everything ends in New Albany this year. From what I could see.
I, I was curious, Chief, as to the events at the golf club. What type and nature are those? And do we typically handle special events there?
Twice a year, they have a, an outing, a members outing where they invite guests into golf. And typically at that event, they request a special duty medic there. And so we'll, we'll provide a medic and, and two, two paramedics on that vehicle for those outings. And then like, like any of the other special events that aren't supported by either the township or the city as a community event, then we charge for the special duty.
And then the Fourth of July, is there going to be a physical parade?
Yes, there is. Yes, there is going to be a parade for the Fourth of July.
Yeah, they, they had that in, it was on the city's website. I know I, I saw as well as moving Founder's Day to August twenty eighth.
Right. Both, both will have parades. The parade for the Independence Day is at eleven A M. Start time.
Yeah, and they, they changed the parade route from what I saw to what started at the school and ended at the church.
Correct.
Yeah, without going through Market Street, they're, they're going down Dublin Grandville.
Oh, okay.
This is an absolute joke when I say that. I bet you Craig Moore got everybody to march in front of the new amphitheater. So.
I, I was just thinking about that. Now, I don't.
Be ready for August.
Yeah, it's a much shorter route, is it not? If I'm.
The only other, the only other thing I have for you is that, that the fire alarm system is proceeding. The only holdup right now is that they still are working and starting to install devices throughout the station and in the Bay Area, but they have not yet received the fire alarm panel. And I checked with them today and they don't have a date on that at this point. So that may be the holdup.
And then I was going to ask with Duke and Dutch is going next to you and a proposed light there at that intersection, how's that been working?
Well, Ben and I've met with Ferris, E P Ferris in the cities and the designers and that. And we've worked out that we will have a control. And actually, originally, they were talking a limited number of controls. We've been able to work out to have a control by each of the front doors to exit. And that we will have traffic preemption of the traffic light there at the intersection closest to the firehouse. And there will not be any traffic preemption on any of the other lights going either direction. There'll also be a set of flashing lights, caution lights that will be set up by the firehouse. So there's any traffic approaches the firehouse from the Village Center, they will have lights that will indicate that the apparatus will be leaving the station.
Great.
Thanks, John.
Good.
Jack, I saw your note on A E D for the, the station, the replacement since the, the one is at end of life. And congratulations and thank you for getting that O T R M A grant that covers a big chunk of that purchase cost. Is that something that we need to act on in a future meeting? Or is there something you need done from us on that?
Yeah, yeah, we, I figured we'd take care of that your next morning meeting.
Okay, great. And Tom, I had gotten together with Jack a couple of weeks ago before our last meeting and we were talking about went through his, his board and also talked about the strategic plan study. And I had, you know, I had sort of called out at the last meeting, you know, what the, the, the first phase of the, the study was going to be. And Jack was going to put together some documents on that. He had sent me a draft and I had provided some suggestions. Jack, when you get that done, you know, after you and Ben have had a whack at it, if you could, you know, just circulate to the trustees and make sure that everybody's okay with it and.
I actually put together both phases in one document and I'm, I'm pretty well completed with it. I sent it to the battalion chiefs for their suggestions and review, and then I'll get it back to Ben and out to you, to the trustees.
Sounds good.
Great, thanks.
Anything else we need to cover with the fire department, Jack?
Nope, that's it. Thank you, sir.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay, next up, we've got the fiscal office and our fiscal officer.
My microphone works, so I'm here. I really don't have much, guys. We submitted and kudos to the staff for getting all the credit card stuff done on Friday so that we had it for us for you all here today. So we've got that. We have the pending warrants, but we have no resolutions. So not a whole lot today.
Okay, great. And Michael, thanks for filling in and attending tonight.
Absolutely. Anytime.
Thanks.
Okay, next up on the agenda, let's see, what do we have next? Is it? Are we at old business or are we, where are we at here, Ben? Need to roll just a little bit. There we go, credit card statements. So we are at trustees. I'm going to do all my, I know I include all these. I'm going to do all mine at once. Or all my one at once. Last time we met, Mr. Durk mentioned the, the review that the city council had of what was a conceptual design study for what could be done with, potentially with the parkland there on Kits Miller. That the, the land in question, there's a, a big chunk that's in there that I think was part of the A N F development that they, Naco used. It was one of those they used as wetland mitigation. That's, that runs up behind those lots on the, the west side of Kits Miller. And then there are two parcels, there might actually have been three lots, but you know, two owners that were on the, the southeast corner of that that were acquired in two thousand. Kind of like it was, it was like the late two thousands or early two thousand teens. And the, the city purchased those because of the adjacency to the other parkland. So the wetlands areas in the back are not really conducive to a whole lot of active recreation. But the, the dry areas that were the house lots provide some opportunities. And I had touched base with the city staff just in my, my role as resident next door to what it would go on, just to see what they were talking about. And Mike had mentioned pickleball courts and that's, maybe that's something they talked about, but it's not something that was in the plan. And when I talked to Joe Stefanoff, he said that it, it was a, an initial design study. There's, there's no funding for it at this point. And so it's not something that's going to happen in the, in the next year. But you know, something that could be done within the, the next few years. And so as they move forward, there, you know, there'll be more discussions and opportunity for community input and things like that. So it done, done with the right elements could be a, a really nice amenity for both, you know, the neighbors up there as well as the community. So we'll see what they have planned. And that's all I have, Tom.
Thanks, Dave. I have really no old business or new business at this meeting. Thanks.
Citizens comments. Mister, Mister Former Chief Hoofler, welcome.
Welcome, everybody. I miss everybody.
Hey, Chief.
You know, the cows don't talk back much, so I, I need.
That's great.
The girls did thank me though, because I turned a bull in last night. I just like to make a couple of statements. First of all, I think Chief Rupp is doing an outstanding job. It's been a difficult time the last year and a half, but I think Jack has stepped up to the plate, which I knew he would. And there wasn't any doubt in my mind that he would be a, a good choice for fire chief. But I do think he needs help. It's been ten months now, soon to be a year. I think we need to, or you need to get somebody in there as assistant chief. So Jack can start passing on some of his knowledge to that person. So there is somewhat of a smooth transition when Jack decides to hang his hat up. So I appreciate everything that Jack's doing. I think the fire department as a whole is operating very smoothly. I'm very proud of the department and their work that they're doing. Thanks.
Oh, thank you, John, and appreciate the input and, you know, definitely concur that that you trained up everybody well to carry on as you got to take care of your cows and all their needs. The other good news is that as we're finally getting ourselves out of this pandemic stuff that we, we still have on the horizon a, a proper retirement party for you and promotional party for Jack. And so it's not, not something that's falling off the radar. So we intend to do it right here in the near future.
Well, I appreciate.
Yeah, Chief, I sent on to the, to the trustees and Ben the profiles that have been working on for all the members of the department so that, that, that can help them with their choice or their decisions in terms of succession planning and that. So we've finally got that put together and it was sent to them actually this morning.
Did see that, Jack. Thank you.
Yeah, I did see it, Jack. And John, good to hear from you. Always great to have you participate and your thoughts are welcome. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we have no one else on the call to, to make comment. Unless anybody else has anything that they'd like to contribute before we wrap up. I will take silence as a no. So with that, I would move for adjournment.
I will second.
All in favor, Tom?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Thanks, everybody.
Yep.
Have a great night, everyone. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Everybody take care. Have a great night.
Good night.
Good night.